Raise.
You ready? Ready?
All right, we call this PSA meeting to order. I see we have a quorum. Appreciate everybody coming out. We'll start with public address. Anybody would like to come and speak to the board? Step up and state your name and address and you'll have five minutes.
Is it on? Okay. My name is Frank Simonowski. I live at 3881 Mountain Laurel Ridge. And I've been there for 20 years. And when my wife and I bought, we found out that we were going to be on a well. And I had a previous property where I had to replace a well. And I knew quite a bit about it, including the expenses and how long it took to get a well clear after you got it set up and have to shock it and, you know, do all that treatment. So I was pretty concerned and cautious about buying there. So I went and got a copy. The house was practically brand new. And I got a copy of the well completion report. And it was so wonderful. I said, oh, we're home free. Thirty gallons a minute yield on that well. And yeah, it had some iron in it, but the system that we had was by rain, rain soft. And the water was perfectly clear. It never had any problem with it. Other than picking up all the salt. Now I have trouble. I was a lot younger then and now I'm picking up the salt bags and doing all that. But a couple of years ago, our showers weren't yielding. They weren't working good. And so I had Roar was the original people that put in the well. And they came back and they pulled the entire casing. And it was totally filled with the rust. And they, they got that all cleared. But what they found out was that it was only yielding like one and a half gallons a minute. That's not enough for a good shower. And they, they said, there's not much you can do about it other than we can try drilling it 600 feet deeper. Now, we had a neighbor that did that and it didn't make much difference. They still don't have a very good yield. And Roar said, the issue is that so many houses have been put on wells in that area. And there wasn't enough hydraulics, hydraulic, hydraulic studies that would verify that those number of homes could be supported by the aquifers there. And they said over the years, the aquifers have drawn down. And that's why we're not getting anywhere near minimum acceptable. You couldn't sell a home on a well at the kind of rate we have. So it's a big concern to us. Because people try to buy a nice house, they're expecting an acceptable well. But we don't have one. Anyway, that's my story. I'm sticking to it. We really hope that you can get PSA to come up with a good plan.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. I learned something.
I'll be real quick. First, thanks for setting this up. Secondly, water in general. Echo what Frank says. We are on Brush Mountain Circle. I've gone to the well owner course, so I'm certified to talk about the wells. And yeah, I'm bringing a message from a neighbor who's watching his kids who can't be here. Similar, low yield, rust everywhere, full of rust, et cetera. My big sweat, being a Freddie cat, is firefighting. We have, we're at the top of a hill. I've talked to some of the fire crews about how in the heck are you going to get water up there to fight a fire? The answer is they truck it up. And one of them laughed and said, when we pull a truck full of water up that hill, we're leading a parade because you can barely hack it. Now they have a more powerful one now, he told me. But that's my concern. And we're becoming more and more pine up there as you, I walk my dog every day and you can see the pine forest growing out. And we know how pines burn when they get dry, et cetera, et cetera. Okay. Also, what is the county plan is a question that we hope will see addressed here. And I hope I'm not cutting into the time for getting the presentation done. I was surprised at opportunities to talk. So thanks for hearing me out. Fun being here. You know, I really enjoy living in Montgomery County. We're transplants, as you can probably figure out. Okay.
Sir, sir, could you state your name and address, please?
Sure. Roger Burnett. Address is 1810 Brush Mountain Circle, Blacksburg, Virginia, 24060.
Thank you.
8319.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thanks again.
Good evening. My name is Tim Corvin. I'm at 3950 Mountain Laurel Ridge Road, Blacksburg, Virginia. And one, I want to appreciate y'all giving us this time to share information about our experience. We love Brush Mountain, but the challenge is we're replacing pumps. It's not unusual to see a new drill come up the mountain almost monthly with the well going dry. Since we've been there, we've had to replace water heaters constantly in the home out there. We pay for a very expensive service, but you still have the rust. I've given up buying any white shirts. Have to send them down to the cleaners. I'd save a lot of money that alone because you still have enough of a rust that it's going to color the water. Most importantly though, I think it is the concern about the quantity of water that's available. And we live right there in the forest. And if there's a fire, it is going to go right through Brush Mountain. It's at the top of the ridge. If you go up there, you're going to see a lot of trees that have fallen down just from the wind alone. So we appreciate the supervisor's commitment to look about providing water to areas in the county. And I was driving around this weekend. I saw water on Route 11 and water down Price's Fork and water is down Shawsville and Reiner. We're right on the brink of Blacksburg in this part of the county. And we certainly appreciate your taking time to look at us and to look about the opportunities for providing water to our area. Thank you for this night. Thank you.
My name is Bill Dewis. I live at 3931 Mountain Laurel Ridge. We've been living in our house for 18 years, just two of us, a family of two. And the pump failed last September. So we had to pull the pipe to find out what the problem was. And the problem was that the inch and a quarter PVC, which goes down in the casing, had was full of red mud, full of iron. And it was just a little pencil hole for the pump to push the water through. So we had to replace the pump and replace the pipe. We got all that done. And in that process, we did some measurements. My well is 180, the casing's 180 feet deep. I got 80 feet of water. The builder said it was the best well they'd ever dug. They all say that. But the problem with that 80 feet of water is it's full of mud. It's 80 feet of mud. And this is what came out of the pipe. It's dry now, but this was mud. So I got 80 feet of mud. And our subdivision has 80, about 80 lots. And there's 63 plus or minus homes there now. And we've all got the same problem because we're all drawing water out of this mud aquifer. And there's just nothing you can do about it. There's nothing you can do about it. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Saher Lahuar. I live at 1771 Brush Mountain Creek Road. We've lived in our house for 22 years now. And like all my neighbors since day one, we've had big problems with iron. We'd had, we've had like a Cologen come out and install these water systems and they would fail and they would do them again. Basically, we're a family of four and we can never take two showers like together or something. Our, our water pressure is maybe, I don't know, we get like one and a half gallons per minute or something like that. And there's always red stains everywhere. There's always iron in the toilets and it's, it's just, you know, unbearable. So my fish, they, they don't like it at all. I thank you for like trying to solve our problem. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jim Flowers. I live at 1801 Brush Mountain Circle. Been there since 2005. And we can't have white linens. Sheets turn orange immediately. You can't wash anything that's light colored without it coming out rust stained. It's just a fact of life up there, but it's a significant inconvenience to the family. I mean, the rust in the toilets is the obvious one because you see that all the time. But it's also a significant property value situation. You know, I would, I would not want to disclose it in a, if I were going to sell my house, but I'd feel obligated to do so. It's, it's significant impact on our family.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Thank you very much. My name is Mike Doughty. I live on 745 Brush Mountain Road, Blacksburg, Virginia. My wife and I have been up on Brush Mountain for around 20 to 21 years. We were one of the first homes up there. And just like, we're going to sound like, just like a broken record. Yes, I have to take my white shirts, everything. Thank goodness, my mom, my mom will help me out. My wife will help me out running to the laundromat. But it does get old. It has gotten old. But like everybody else, we have, I went through one well. I was hoping that was going to be one well only would, would take care of my lifetime there. Sure enough, we went dry. We had pump problems about two or three years ago. So we had pump problems, burped, burned our pump up. Then it burnt our well up. So we had to drill a second well. We had to have a second well drilled. And just like here everybody else, we just, we just struggled through our water softeners, our iron systems and everything just to, just to get clean water. And yes, my wife and I have to coordinate our showers. And, and our water time. Because if both of us are in the showers at the same time, it does almost go down to a trickle, a little bit, just a very little bit of water. So I will, I will have to say that, that we are all struggling with our water situations up on Brush Mountain. And we do want to thank each and every one of you for allowing us to come to the table and lay it out on our, on the table with our problems. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to come forward and speak? Seeing no others, we'll close the public address. If it's, if it's okay with everybody, maybe we can go ahead with the presentation since everybody's here to see that. Is everybody good with that?
Okay, we have a Dennis Seamus with Hurt and Profit here to do a presentation tonight on a couple of different ways maybe to get water up there to Brush Mountain West.
All right. Thank you all for allowing me to be here tonight. We were tasked by the PSA of doing an initial conceptual cost estimate for extending PSA water into the Brush Mountain West area. So, I'm here tonight to present the findings of that initial evaluation. Couple of things to keep in mind before we get started in earnest. Number one, this is a conceptual exercise in nature so far, so there hasn't been a full preliminary engineering report done on the options that I'm going to show tonight. These are options that we feel like will work, but they're, they need to be vetted out further before any official action would be taken. Another thing to keep in mind, the availability of water for the area would need to be discussed with the providers that, that would need to be coordinated with to get the water to the Brush Mountain West area. The, the tank sites that we're showing on this preliminary report are in fact in the Forest Service area. We've had some initial discussions with them. That would, to, to move forward with that option would take some permitting and coordination with them. They didn't say that it would be off the table, so we feel like that is a viable option. But that again, would need some further investigation and further vetting in itself. The estimates assume that everyone will connect. So, what, what I'm going to show you here tonight shows a system that will serve the entire area. There are approximately a hundred and thirty-five homes on what I'm going to show you here shortly and as well as about twenty-nine empty lots. So, with all that being said, we looked at two options of getting water to the area. One is to connect to the existing water distribution network that's along Bishop Road that would require a bore under Route four-sixty. The option would then require a pump station that would then pump water to the top of the mountain. We've shown two tank sites that are potential options that would serve the area. Tank site A and B, they're separated by approximately twenty-one-hundred feet. The, the higher tank site gives a little bit more favorable hydraulic condition to provide fire flow as well as pressure to the entire service area. Either site will work, but again, the, the tank site A provides a little bit more favorable hydraulic condition. The other option that we looked at was to upgrade the PSA's existing Laurel Ridge system and get water to the tanks from that direction that also would require an upgrade to the existing pump, pumping network to get water into those tanks. Next, we have the cost estimates themselves. These two that we're showing are both related to the four-sixty bore option that connects along Bishop Road. The one on the left is for tank site A. The one on the right is for tank site B. So, the only real difference in those two cost estimates is that additional twenty-one-hundred feet of main line. You'll notice that the overall cost estimate for tank site A is six million, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The total estimate for tank site B is five million, eight hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, not a lot of difference there between the two, but those are both related to crossing four-sixty, building a pump station to pump water to the top of the mountain, and then getting a two-hundred-thousand gallon water storage tank on top of the mountain that will provide fire flow and residential water for the entire area. This next exhibit is similar in that it has cost estimates for tank site A and tank site B. The one on the left is for tank site A, and it includes upgrading the Laurel Ridge system to get water to these tank sites through that network. The total cost estimate for tank site A in this, in this example is five million, nine hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. If we go with tank site B, that total cost estimate is five million, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And again, both of these options that we're looking at includes getting a two-hundred-thousand gallon water storage tank on top of the mountain that will be able to provide fire protection to the community as well as potable water to the, to the, to the customers. Again, this, these estimates include piping networks that serve the entire community. And if everyone were to connect, the price per connection ranges between thirty-four thousand and thirty-seven thousand dollars per connection to get the work done, depending on which option is selected. So, with that, I'll open it up for any questions that anyone may have.
Miss Mary, you want to start?
What was the last figure you gave? Thirty-four thousand to what, to connect? I didn't get the last figure.
To thirty-seven thousand.
Thirty-seven, thank you. Okay. And that would be per household?
Yes, and that would include, if everyone were to connect, that would be per household, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That all you have? Member Steve?
Is there an advantage to the, the higher tank site versus the lower? I mean, is, would that, would gravity be feeding all the houses and the fire hydrants?
Yes, sir. The higher tank site allows us to get a little bit better pressure for the folks that are right at the top of the mountain. So, the folks that are, are right near the top there, the, the lower tank site will get the twenty PSI that's required per the Health Department regulation, but the higher tank site gets us a little bit more pressure there, which would, which would make things more favorable for everyone.
Okay, and you, you have no idea if everybody would be willing to connect?
That's correct.
Okay, so have we done any kind of survey like that, Chuck?
Yes.
That's all I got.
Remember Bone?
What is the Laurel Ridge pump or tank that's up there for at this point in time?
So...
That, that tank act, that system actually belongs to the town of Blacksburg. We don't, we don't operate that Laurel Ridge system, so I'm not familiar with what it is.
So, it's a, it has a pump station down further from, on the mountain, and it pumps up to a hydro tank that's up near the top of the mountain. And that basically provides residential service to several folks there in that Laurel Ridge community, but it does not provide fire flow protection.
Do you have any idea how many people are hooked up to it? Everybody in the Laurel Ridge community?
I don't know the answer to that.
Then, you know, I'm going to ask a question outside of what's, what we're talking about because my district's on the other side of the four-sixty. Do you know if Preston Forest has issues with their water? No one's ever come to me to find out if, to tell me that they've had problems with their water. But would it be beneficial or cost effective to, now let's say we get the higher tank, but in addition to the people on this side of Brush Mountain, we can service the people in Preston Forest, which gives you a lot more houses too? So, the cost per house would go down. Is there potential that that could happen?
I would say yes. You know, the, the more folks that you can get to participate in the project, especially with the densely populated area like this is, the, the more advantageous that's going to be on a cost per connection basis. So, I would, I would say yes.
Would you say that the two-hundred-thousand gallon water storage tank would be sufficient for houses on both sides of four-sixty up there?
We would likely need to resize that part of it for the, the larger number of connections. But again, with, with, with the population density that we're seeing there, I think it probably would be, would bring that cost per connection down.
Is there any connection up Mount Taber? There's no connection up there, huh? Right? Okay.
I don't think so.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Remember Kit?
Could you go back one slide, please?
Yes, sir.
So, I'm just looking at the difference between going under and through and going up. I know this is all hypothetical.
Yes.
Have we kind of approached the subject a little bit with Blacksburg saying, hey, this is a possibility of, you know, I'm just wondering the twos, and how many be more towards Chuck, I guess, than?
We have not, we have not approached them to see if we would, if we could get water. We wanted to go through this portion of it first, just to see where we were as far as what the cost was going to be in putting this in.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
So, I know historically on that subject, Mr. Kits, the town has a long-held policy of not connecting any customers outside of town limits. Are both of these systems, systems that are owned by the town of Blacksburg, both of the proposals, both the options?
Yes, we would be tying into lines currently owned by the town of Blacksburg.
Is there anything in the joiner agreement that prevents or enables that? Okay.
Without having to read through it?
So, then I would say for all of us to consider would be a next step of if we wanted to continue down the path of investigating this, the town is going to have to give us permission. So, we would have to approach the town before it would, we'd have to have them say, yes, we will, we will, we will do this thing that we have long said that we will not do. And I think that that's a really hard hurdle to cross and probably something that we should at least start investigating immediately to see if they'll allow it. And then I wanted to ask specifically about the price per connection. You quoted thirty-four to thirty-seven thousand dollars. That's the price per household if everybody connects, but that's the price to the PSA, not the price to the households. Am I interpreting that correctly?
That's just taking the overall cost estimate and dividing it by the number of, of folks that are...
Okay. So, that would be what we're incurring as the cost and not necessarily the actual customer connection cost. And I just wanted to make sure that I'm hearing that correctly. Is that right, Chuck?
Yes.
Okay. I think that actually answers all of my questions for right now.
Okay. Well, this has been a problem for a ti, of time. It hasn't just occurred because I've heard, I've heard all about the water for a long time. I personally would like to know how we could proceed to be able to, to gather some further information if we need to go to the town, whatever we need to do. I would, I would like to do that for these folks. They represent a large number of residences, especially if you go over on the other side too. So, water is important. Water is important. And these houses where this water is going to are very expensive houses that pay a lot in real estate property tax. So, I would like to see what we could do. That's what I'd like to say.
Remember Graskin?
Thank you. Just, so, so let's say we were able to get the town of Blacksburg to sign off on this and, and we greenlit this project timeline-wise, like how, how big of an undertaking is this?
Typically, for projects like this, you would, you would figure on about a year of planning and design, and then another eight, nine, ten months for construction of a major project like this. So, you, you would be looking at, you know, a year and a half, two years.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have two questions. Is drilling our own well off the table because of all the rust and stuff? Or is it, is it not cheaper to drill our own well up at the top of the mountain?
You'd probably run into the same problem they got.
Right. But is there, you know, commercial level rust removal stuff that would take care of this stuff easier than each resident trying to do it or no?
For sure, the, the, I guess the preferred option would be to extend water to them. If that's off the table, then you would have to look at some other options, you know. I'm not saying that a well would be completely off the table, but with all the problems that people are having, I think it'd be very problematic for the PSA or for anyone to try to, to maintain a well like that. They, they would have the same issues that the, the residents are having now.
Okay. And my second question, maybe Chuck can answer or whomever, and maybe you can't. The last time we extended water, how much did it cost per household? I mean, when was the last time we extended water to a group of residents in our county?
Yeah, we've got one going now into Reiner.
But that, that's being subsidized by the state because of the issues, right?
Not that project.
Okay. And so, how much per household is that costing about?
I wouldn't know that without knowing how many houses we had out there. I can't give you...
Right.
I mean, without knowing how many houses that's going to serve.
So, like thirty-four to thirty-seven thousand is... Yes, Marty?
Yeah, I think we're talking about apples and oranges and that because the, the projects you're talking about are what we're required to do or the PSA is required to do in order to join the water authority. So, those are more, they're, they're not designed or built to serve residents now. Anyone in that line can join, but that's not why they're being built. And the other thing about the well is I think the joiner would prevent us from building a well.
And so, when was the last time that we extended water to neighborhoods then? Because that makes sense that we, that isn't the, it, it is apples and oranges. Decades and decades ago?
Yeah, I don't remember anything.
Do you remember, Mary? You've been around as long as anybody. Sorry. I know, I love you. I love you, Mary, but...
Well, didn't we do work on, we did some work on Price's Fork, you know? So, yeah, yeah. Get rid of that.
Yeah, but we didn't pay for the stuff on Price's Fork.
Reiner.
Yeah. Yeah, we borrowed money. What, what you're talking about is the state helps with, with them, get me right, them five wells that we had to take over.
I'm not talking about those.
That's the only thing we, we had help with. The rest of the money PSA borrowed.
Okay, so for the Price's Fork community that you're talking about, how many years ago was that?
Two thousand and three.
Two thousand and three?
Yeah.
Yeah, Walnut.
And so, at least we can look at that and see if there's a magnitude difference or something like that as far as the cost. Because on top of connecting to any water system, it's the, you know, monthly water bill on top of that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think what you're talking about, please correct me if I'm wrong, when you're saying these figures, that's what it would cost per house. That's not saying...
That's not saying that's what PSA would charge these people. That's just what it would cost divided.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have a follow-up question, too. With this, where would our source of, what would our source of funding be to build something like this? It would just be, we'd have to get a bond or?
Have to borrow it.
Borrow it?
Yep.
Okay.
As an authority. One thing we need to make clear is that the authority is separate from the county. It's, it's a public service authority, which is separate from the county in case that's confusing to folks. So all the money would be through the authority, not through the county. And when we talk about real estate property tax that these folks pay, that relates to the property value that they talked about earlier because water quality is really important when you're moving in somewhere, just like broadband is. So, to make that distinction.
Going, going back to your question about the cost increase, just in the last couple of years that we've looked at doing projects, I know the last two projects, there's been $70 to $80 a foot increase in price in about a year between two projects. So I don't know that going back to 2003 is going to give you an accurate number as to what you're looking for as, as much as things are increasing in price almost daily. So.
I'm glad that, uh, Mary or Todd brought up how we would have to borrow the funds. How, how have we in the past, um, you know, paid for it? Would everybody on our system have increased costs?
Yep.
Because we won't charge Brush Mountain any more than anybody else, right? Right. And there's not enough residences on Brush Mountain to remotely, like, the income that we would get from the customers on Brush Mountain would not even remotely cover a significant amount of cost of this system. Is that correct? Okay. The rate, the water rates are designed to sustain the operations of the PSA, not provide new connections like this. That's what the facility fee purpose is. So there's no money built into the rates to cover things like this.
But you could do connection fees associated with this project, which then those residents would be charged, whatever that amount is. So you could do that where they pay to hook up because of those costs and then pay the regular water bill. That way, you don't have the whole system paying for that upgrade.
It would probably be cheaper if we could get Blacksburg to sell us water like Christiansburg does and just, excuse me, and pay a wheeling fee.
I think we have to do that regardless, right?
Uh, we don't pay any wheeling fee to Blacksburg currently. The only one we pay to is Christiansburg.
No, for either of the options, wouldn't we have to pay a wheeling fee to the town of Blacksburg to get the water anyways?
Either that or come out Giles.
Yeah. I think our best first move is to talk to the town to see if this is something that can be considered as a partnership agreement. Because if they say, no, we're not willing to do that, then we need to look at other alternatives on how we get water there. But there's not much really to consider until we know whether or not we can consider the two options that we have that are probably, um, the best two options, but they require cooperation.
That's why I'd like to move ahead and see what we can do.
I think that that would be a great idea. How would we do, who, how would we do that? Through what venue would we make the connections to the town to start the conversation? Turn on your mic.
That, that should go through the elected officials, right, Marty? Because they're set up different than we are.
Yeah, it could with, with, um, you also would probably want to have staff, maybe Chris, because of his experience with Blacksburg and.
Would it be that we draft a, a letter to the town requesting a conversation on the topic?
Or, you know, you could just reach out and just say, we'd like to talk about this, yeah.
I think staff could reach out to staff to start the conversation.
Is that what we want to do, is have the staff reach out to?
Is everybody, is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Because keep in mind Giles isn't really an option because that would violate.
Violate the joiner.
Joiner.
Well, you'd have to get permission from the water authority, correct?
Right, which is the same people you're talking about.
Yeah, and then because it's not on sewer and it's water, because there's a big controversy about how we treat our water versus how Giles County treats their water. And so the two waters, if they're treated differently, can't intermingle. So, but it wouldn't be a problem if, that part of it wouldn't be a problem because they're on their own sewer system, is what I'm trying to say.
Right, but they'd still have to agree.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
That's a backup.
All right, so we'll consensus have the staff check with Blacksburg. Thank you all. Have anything else?
All right. Yes, sir, appreciate your allowing us to help you with this. And if you need any assistance with this, the discussions with the town, just let me know and I'd be happy to help out.
And could I just thank the citizens that came tonight because they've been very patient and waiting to come to this meeting tonight? Thank you for your input.
I think you had one back there that wanted, one right there wanted to say something. She wanted to say something.
Say something?
Yeah. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, you can come up if you want to.
I'm Nancy Corvin, 3950 Mountain Law Ridge, also. I want to mention a few things. For those of you that don't know, Colbank Collar is in the county. They have town water. The line that goes under 460 right now is a two-inch pipe going up to Brush Mountain Road at the bottom. But it's a private person that put that in for the trailer park at the bottom there of Brush Mountain Road. But there's a two-inch line right now going from the town up Bishop Road under 460 to get to that area. Also, I'm not sure about Preston Forest. I, I sell real estate, too, okay? So sorry, I know a lot about these areas. Um, but, um, Preston Forest is right across the street from Colbank Collar, who already has town water there. When that subdivision was built, they, you know, the town brought the water to them. So it's very close there to Preston Forest, closer than we are to Preston Forest. So, but I just wanted to mention in case some of y'all weren't aware that there is already up the Bishop Road area and that the town in the past has done some of these things, you know, coming over into the county. So I didn't know if that'd be helpful for you all to know if you weren't aware of that. So, um, but, but yeah, we appreciate, I appreciate you letting me bring that up because some of y'all may not have been aware of that. So it's very close. It's just like right at the bottom already. The people at the bottom of our mountain actually have, um, town water and they also have like good internet and everything because they're getting it from the system under 460 that's already been put under there. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mary.
The what? Oh, yeah, they don't need to stay. You want me to tell them? Okay. Um, if you guys, like, we won't take any further action on this tonight. So if you want to leave, you can. Or if you'd like to stay and see what we do for PSA, that's fine, too.
Is there a motion for consent?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Ma'am Secretary, call roll, please.
Ms. Vann?
Aye.
Ms. Demott?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Grasky?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Kit?
Aye.
Todd, Mr. King?
Aye.
Yeah, aye, you're good.
Thank you. All right, new business.
What happens in the show?
We just done a presentation. I appreciate y'all allowing us to do that before this.
Yeah, that was good.
And we have another new business is uniform policy.
I was asked to look into, um, uniforms for the guys. Right now, currently, we do $200 a year clothing allowance. There, uh, there's some other departments in the county who are receiving uniforms. Um, so we looked into the pricing of that. I, I don't know if Kari has that to share.
So it'd basically be $35.42 per employee. That's for 14 employees. So it would approximately be $250 per week for all the employees, for pants, shirts. 11 shirts, 11 pair of pants, um, a jacket, like a lightweight jacket for them to have.
And that's a month?
It's weekly.
Weekly.
$250 weekly.
Yep.
Does that include laundering?
Yes.
Also includes if they term, they get them back.
How many employees did you say there were?
14.
So what's the total per year? I can't do the math. $13,000 or so? Yeah, that makes sense.
Then you'd be taking off at $300 if we, $200 we give them.
Yeah, difference of $13,000 to $4,200.
Any more? We've, we've had some, a couple of issues in the past where somebody goes to a house and gets water samples and that sort of thing. And they're not, I mean, we have these right now. And so, and in the summertime, they wear a T-shirt with the patch on it. But we don't always have those. And looking out your window, that's kind of hard to see what that is. And that's just, that's one of the reasons why it would be beneficial to have those.
I think that's good because it's very professional and I think that the employees would really appreciate that.
Is that something we can vote on tonight or?
Yeah. Vote on tonight, Marty?
Yeah.
Can, can someone make the motion now?
Yeah, I think so.
If all the discussion's done.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we talked about this last time, so we'd already brought it up, so, yeah.
I make the motion that we do it.
Second?
Is any more discussion?
Yeah. Didn't we just go through this last year? What, what, what is different about the one last year versus now? More uniforms?
They wanted, if you remember, the employees wanted to get their own jeans and stuff. And now they want to do the, uh, uniforms again.
Okay. I thought that's what we did. I thought we did go to the uniforms.
No. We went with, we give them X amount of dollars and then they had to wear a T-shirt or something that had PSA on it.
Okay. Can't wait till next year.
No, no, it, it was the discussion. If we move this route, that's where it's at.
I'm good with it. No more questions.
If we do this, it'll be required that they wear the full uniform, pants, shirt, the full thing?
Socks, everything.
Socks? Full PSA logo on their socks?
Steel-toed boots.
I think the, the boots are probably separate from the uniform, right?
Boots is separate. They get allotment for muck boots and stuff.
Yep.
Ma'am Secretary, call roll, please.
Did the motion get a second?
Yeah.
Yeah. Ms. Vann?
Aye.
Ms. Demott?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Grasky?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Kit?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you all. We got, one more thing we got on the, Chuck's going to bring up and I asked him to do this.
Hey, it's compensation for on-call employees. Right now, we have on-call, we have the maintenance, the maintenance guys are on-call. It's typically five. They're compensated 16 hours a week for being on-call. And again, to bring it in line with all the other departments in the county, then we would ask that that be doubled. And what that will be is two hours per each eight-hour shift, three hours per weekends.
It would, it would bring it from 16 to 32.
Yes.
As the county does. And most time when, when these people go out, they're out there for a while.
And how should we expect it to cost?
The county, or the county, usually when the county has their 32 hours, but correct me if I'm wrong, they can take a week off.
That's right.
But PSA people know they, we cannot have them taking the time off because we just don't have the group that the county has.
And there's money in the budget to pay for it.
Yeah.
And how much will it cost, do we know?
I've not calculated that. One thing you could look at that would make it be more comparable to the county in that regard is if you added one more person that is on the shift. If you had to, I don't know if that would require you to add an extra employee or how that would equate, but that's what they do. They, they flex off their time. So they're on-call and then they flex the time off and somebody else is on-call. So there's not an, there's not a payout, but there is a cost by having that person.
I don't know the exact cost. Haven't, haven't figured that into it yet.
Because ultimately, the, the employees are going to be earning time and a half for that amount of time that they're accumulating. So they're going to earn comp time for that and eventually they might have to get paid out. So we can figure out what the cost of that is.
They don't earn money, they earn hours for being on-call?
No, they earn money. It's, it's straight time.
Straight time? So if, if I'm on the rotation, I'm one of the five, I work my regular 40 plus I, 32 hours is straight time for being on-call for the week. So that week I get 72 hours of straight time unless I work 41 hours and then I would get time and a half on that one. Gotcha.
And the way it's set up is if, if an employee goes out over two hours, then they get paid time and a half for that time, but they don't get the two hours plus the time and a half that they were out. Does, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Did you have a question, Marty?
No, he's right. You get two for being on-call, but if you get called out, the first two are already paid for, is what he's saying, right? So if you went out for three, you'd get one extra hour, right?
A time and a half.
Well, the time and a half would be dictated by if, if they're over 40 for the week.
If you've already worked 40 hours, yes.
How many hours per week do they work right now?
It depends if they get called out.
If they don't get called out?
40 hours.
40 hours.
And then in order to be on the on-call rotation, we have probably geographically limited them and also they are limited in, you know, they couldn't have a cocktail after work or something like that. So they're, they're kind of on babysitting duty for the week.
Right.
I guess. And then how far can they be outside of, like, away? Do they have to pretty much be at home? They can't go to?
What's the callback time?
Concert in West Virginia or something, could they?
No, no, they have to be around when they're on-call.
And generally, the way that works is they, if they know they got something to do, they're, they're real good about asking somebody to take their place and say, hey, can you do this for me? I've got this to do or whatever.
And I said that just because it's very lifestyle-limiting to be on-call. Um, and so I support this idea of expanding it to 32, I think, because I, I recognize that it means almost like an expectation to be available 24/7 for a whole week. Um, and that is lifestyle-limiting.
Yep.
And, and just so I understand, so all 14 employees take the calls, just five at a time?
And, and just so I understand, so all 14 employees take the calls, just five at a time, better than no? There's only five out of the 14?
We only have, we only have the maintenance crew that takes, just the maintenance crew that take the call. Yep.
Okay.
Water and sewer issues is what we-
Okay.
Yep.
It just seems to me that, um, it's very natural to do time and a half if they work outside of their 40 hours. I mean, that's, you know.
We do, we do the time and a half if they work outside of 40. If they don't go out, they just receive this time, this compensation for being on-call, being on standby.
Okay.
Yeah. But if they go out and they're out, if they work 45 hours a week, then they get time and a half for the five hours. Yep. But that comes off of the 32. In other words, they would get whatever that is minus the, off of the 32, then they would only receive the remainder as straight time.
I see.
Isn't that right, Krieger? Isn't that how it works out?
We're just trying to get them up to par with the county people.
So, it's only overtime for hours actually worked?
Yes.
Right?
Yes. Now, if they go out, if they have to run to someone's house and they're there for an hour, then there is no, there is no extra compensation other than what they're getting for being on-call. They have to be out. If it's a, if it's an evening, if it's a Monday through Friday evening and it's a two-hour, um, call, a standby, then if they're out past two hours, they get, they get time and a half of that.
That, that's what we're trying to do.
Make sense? Can you do that? Yeah, okay, good.
Is this outlined in like a formal policy or anything?
It is, it is with the county. And that's what we're just trying to, we try to do the same thing with PSA that the county does. And that's why I'm asked to bring this up, because we're not in line with the county.
I do have some numbers for you. In the la, fiscal year '23, the cost for overtime was about $24,000. So, it would be, that's how much the increased cost would be, about 24. So far, uh, for water this year, the cost is about 20,000. So, it's running higher than, um, last year. But that gives you a little bit of a ballpark on that.
So, it'd be an additional 24 on top of the 24?
Right, because we're, if we double the-
Yeah.
It would be a little bit less than that, I would say, because that includes the on-call time plus what people really get called out for. So, it would be a little bit less than that, but it's a ballpark.
Right. I think it's a good idea.
And some of that increase, uh, that she's talking about already this year could be, um, because we, we're, we're down a few people. So, some, some people-
Right.
May have had to go out that normally wouldn't have to. So, that may be some of that increase in the time.
No, I, I agree with Anthony, I mean, Mr. Gravsky on this one. I think it should be in line with, with the county has. So, the policy stays the same. So, it lends to continuity. Put it in writing and make sure it's enforceable.
There's a, there is a policy for the 16 hours. We would just have to, we would just have to get it rewrote for, for the 32.
We can bring that to the next meeting. Do we have to wait to vote on that to the next meeting or?
No, I think they could vote on it tonight, just, you know, under the, the principle understanding that that's what the policy's gonna do, yeah.
I would think the policy would be an administrative task more than-
Exactly. Just let Chuck do it.
Yeah.
Do it.
So moved.
I can do that.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
I do have, just sorry, just one more question.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm just-
No, you're good.
I've lived in worlds of on-call and it seems to all be different depending on the industry and all that kind of stuff, so. So, is there, their on-call, is it paid at their regular hourly rate? Okay, so it's not like some stipend and then they get paid if they get called in? Okay. All right, thank you.
Chuck, one more thing. We gotta make sure, because we do this with the county, that the regulations you set up while they're on-call are reasonable and fair. So, you know, where you give them an hour to report. I mean, they don't have to sit at home, but they can't obviously go anywhere where they can't get there in an hour. And, because you want to make, you want to make it so they at least have a life to certain extent during that call period.
That, that part is in, I know that's in there, where you have a certain amount of time to respond to a call.
Yeah, I think we've set up some rules that we could share with you.
Yep. That's already in our policy, I'm pretty sure, so.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Mr. Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Gravsky?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Kits?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you all. Financial report.
Okay, so cash balance, February 29th, we had operating cash of $2,543,641. Capital improvements was $714,078. Customer deposits, $98,580. For a total of $3,356,299.
That was quick. Short and sweet. Directors report.
Okay, I just have a couple of things to share with you real quick. All the well systems are complete with the exception of some restoration. Uh, we're waiting on the health department to, uh, come by and inspect Twin Boulders, which should take place, uh, either this week or the first part of next week. All 225 customers are, are being individually metered now that we added, that we took over. And I shared with, some of you have seen the pictures of the new facilities at Twin Boulders. I don't think Mr. Kits has, Ms. Bone has not. So, everything is going really well. We just keep on going until we get done. And, and it's, and Reiner, uh, Reiner is going, they've gotten into some rock on Meta Creek Road and it's, it slowed them down some. But they're hammering on through it, so.
Were there any complaints about the cost of water for these, the new customers? Yeah.
No, I mean, yeah, maybe one or two, you know, but, but the majority of them were, were just happy they had the increase in pressure and, and, um, the fact that somebody's going to be looking after things and taking care of things is, is made a big difference. And that ma, that says a lot for the increase in, in the water, the cost of the water, if somebody's there to make sure they have water. You're welcome.
Thank you, Chuck.
You're welcome.
Member Biggs?
No report, but thank everyone for this opportunity for the citizens from District F to come forward.
Member Bone?
I'd like to, um, talk about conference calling into this meeting. I know you guys discussed it when I wasn't here. Even in MP2, a conference call can be set up. And if me, if I or someone else on this board has to be out of town, but wants to bring up or participate in this meeting, I think it would be a really good idea to do that. I don't know how complicated it is to set up a conference call, but I've been in the, um, MPO meetings and they do it. I don't know, maybe it's complicated.
It's not, uh, that's, it's not an issue for us to get the conference call. We can do that if the board desires.
I just think that we should set it up so that in the future, if somebody wanted to call in, they could. I understand that I, I or the next board member wouldn't have to attend, but maybe they would like to attend because something's happening in their district or something like that. And they just could not be at this meeting so that they could participate. I don't think it needs to be recorded. I don't, you know, I think a simple conference call would be sufficient. If people are open to that, I'd like to put that, so it is a, so we can do that.
The, the board has to adopt a policy similar to the one that the Board of Supervisors adopted before, um, a member can participate, uh, virtually.
Would everybody be okay or are you still not interested? Is there a particular reason why?
Because we know the meeting schedule in advance and we can plan for it.
Not necessarily, right? If there's a death in the family or something like that?
If there's an emergency or something like that, I don't think anybody would expect board members to attend.
Why wouldn't it be a good thing? What, what's the hardship about having the possibility to do it?
I just said I don't, I don't want the policy. If, I mean, I'm one of seven, so my answer to that is no.
Anybody else open to that?
I'm indifferent.
Indifferent over here.
If I wanted somebody to know something that was that prevalent for the meeting, I could let somebody else know in advance so they could bring up the point for me. So, we didn't have to add that, but at the end of the day, I'm with, uh, Mr. Fidjikowski, I'm kind of indifferent. I'm not leaning in one way or the other.
Mr. Gravsky?
I guess my, my position on it is, you know, it's very similar, right? It's, they're, they're scheduled, uh, we've had two in three months so far. And that, I think that this, this board, any board, uh, you know, is supportive of folks that don't need or that have things that arrive, issues, circumstances that arise that, um, you know, don't require your attendance. And, you know, we have a board chair, we have a vice chair that can, to Mr. Kits' point, you know, relay that information, convey that information for you. But, you know, if the board wants to take up a, uh, motion, then I'll consider it, but I won't make a motion.
I, um, I could see it like in case of an emergency, because I've had both things happen, emergency and a death in a family, when you're still stuck somewhere, but you would be able to call in. But I would think it would be for like one of those reasons, you know, like-
If I have a death in the family or an emergency, I'm not calling in. Full stop.
I mean, I would expect us to be present for that situation.
The point is, is if the death in the family and everything's taken care of, but you're just not back, you know? It, it's, it'd be nice to participate if, if it's possible. I mean, I take my job, I mean, I'd like to be able to participate if I'm not here. And I would think other people that might become, come onto this board in the future may want it too. Now, it can pass in the future or it could pass now or not. I just thought I would, since I'm here, would bring up my point of view.
And I'll say too, I think, I think part of our discussion, uh, at the first meeting was, you know, because of the infrequency of these meetings that stress the importance of if you are able to attend, to be here and to be physically present and, and engage in the conversation.
For example, this last month, I left town fast. Like, I had no knowledge of the fact that I was going to leave town three hours in advance, you know? So, uh, it is what it is. I would like to make the motion. Would someone second it for me?
What is your motion to do it?
My motion is that we make it an option to have a conference call for this meeting.
But not just in emergencies, but for any time?
For any time, but I'm not gonna willy-nilly. I mean, the, the policy can be changed in the future.
Just to be clear, that, what the state law says is, um, if you're going to set up a policy where someone can call in, the reasons they can call in are to be a caregiver, illness, or personal reason. And so, if they meet one of those three, that, then it would meet the policy. I'm not, I, I mean, I can look at it more closely. I don't know whether you can take out the personal reason one. Remember, the personal reason one is limited, uh, to two meetings or 25%, whichever's last, which, with the Board of Supervisors, that's still 10 or 11 meetings. It's still a lot, so, but, um.
So, my motion would include that verbiage so that we don't have to get wonky about, um, the policy itself. Is anybody willing to second that? It's fine. I appreciate you listening to me.
Supervisor, sorry, Member Mott?
No report, thank you.
Member Steve?
No report.
We're trying to get this right. Gravsky, Gravsky.
You got it, you got it. Uh, no report, thank you.
Vice Chair Kits?
No report.
I, I just got a short thing if I can get through it. I just want to personally thank, uh, the two towns and all the, um, private companies that contacted PSA to help us during our time at, on tail engines, county staff, how much I appreciate them, Chuck, and the PSA staff. It, it really means a lot to me when you see people pull together like this. I mean, it, it was really wonderful and I do appreciate each and every one of you. I'm gonna stop now. Thank you.
I got one more thing I'd like to ask.
Yeah.
I didn't ask a second ago. Do we want to start this uniform policy now or do we want to wait till the next budget year?
Where, Mike?
Now?
You can get it lined up, yeah.
I mean, we pretty much got it lined up, right? I mean, we've already, we've already met, but the only thing we don't have is the fitting of the clothes. I mean, other than that, we'll, we can get it pretty mu, we can get it going pretty quick, I think.
All right. All right, is there any more comments or anything? Seeing none, meeting adjourned.
Okay. Here do we have everybody? Okay. All right, we're going to go ahead and call to order our meeting tonight for March 4th. And we're going to start off with asking Ms. Hill to do the invocation and the pledge.
Please rise as you're able. Join me in a moment of silence and then I'll lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so our item of business tonight is the presentation of the FY 2024-2025 proposed county budget, and Ms. Hill will be presenting that to us.
Thank you Chair Biggs, it's my pleasure to present the FY 2025 proposed budget for Montgomery County to the Board of Supervisors this evening. You each have a printed version of the document in front of you, and as soon as the meeting's over, online versions will be as well, available as well. The message is included in your document tonight, and I'm going to hit the high points of that, and then we'll turn it over to Mark, and he can go over some more detailed information. There is a lot of information that we're bringing you tonight, so as we normally do at this meeting, we'll just present it to you, then if you have any questions, you can get back with me during the week. Montgomery County is growing, evolving, and adapting as we focus on our future. And in order to achieve this, we have to execute a strategic funding plan that will support detailed initiatives that will allow us to continue to provide superior customer service to our citizens. We face challenges with the budget process every year, and this year we have some challenges that are a little bit different or a little unique. As you know, we are continuing in a period of economic uncertainty that we have to navigate. One thing that's different this year is we have potential additional funding from the state for the schools. The governor's proposed budget, which was presented in December of 2023, had an additional $5.5 million for Montgomery County Public Schools. The two bills that were proposed by the House and Senate both call for additional funding in an amount between $2 to $5 million, those are our estimates. And the Conferences are working on the budget this week, hopefully by the end of the week. There might be some compromise budget bill that will go forward to the governor, and then we would have to see where it went from that point. My goal is to present a balanced budget to you and a tax rate recommendation that adequately addresses the identified needs without providing a surplus in funds. The school board presented their budget to you last Monday, so the board knows what those challenges are. And tonight I'm going to share some information about county challenges and opportunities. First of all, my vision is to focus on the essential county operations and services, then to support and empower employees at all levels of our organization. We need to allow them to continue to provide superior customer service to our citizens. As our population has grown over the last 20 years, the demand for services has grown as well, and our employees have managed increasingly complex issues and workload with limited staffing and limited resources. In order to continue addressing the growing needs, we must now provide additional staff, tools, and overall resources for county departments and employees. I wanted to give you a brief overview of how we process the budget requests internally before they come to you. We strive to promote and facilitate a culture of appreciation, collaboration, and teamwork among our leadership team, and as a means of doing this, collaborating and holding each other accountable, each department director, including the constitutional officers and agency directors, present their budget request to the leadership team. That group is comprised of those individuals as well as Chris, Brad, and me, so that we all learn about the requests together. The requests are fully vetted in that form by the leadership team before I make my final evaluation and ultimately bring recommendations to you. This process builds collaboration by allowing the team members to gain a better understanding of each area of responsibility, and it also provides a fresh perspective, and frequently it provides an opportunity to identify creative solutions to challenges that we might not have otherwise come up with. This year I've enjoyed working closely with Dr. Bregan. We've worked diligently, met and talked frequently during the process to ensure that we're both aware of all the needs as well as the funding sources and other factors that are facing both of us. So for my proposal, the budget I'm presenting tonight totals $254.6 million, which is an increase of $18.2 million over the current fiscal year. I'm also proposing a real estate tax rate of 75 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value, which is a five cent increase over the current rate of 70 cents. Each penny on the real estate tax has a value of approximately $1.2 million. The combination of local revenue growth, additional state funding, and the dollars generated through an increase in the real estate tax rate will provide resources to allow several things. We will be able to provide $5.9 million in additional county funding for the school operating fund. That will bring the school operating fund to a total of $146.6 million. While that is less than the schools requested, Dr. Bregan and I have discussed, as I mentioned earlier, the possibility that the state will provide additional funding for MCPS, and we can address that throughout the process. My budget also restores the full two and a half cents of the real estate tax rate for future school and future county capital projects. As you recall, last year during the budget process, each was reduced to two cents. I've included a 5% pay increase for all county employees. This is important so that we can stay competitive as we compensate our existing employees. We've done a really good job with this over the past few years, and we don't want to lose ground. We still do have challenges recruiting new employees for some positions due to pay constraints. I've included in special contingencies $500,000 for a potential health insurance increase. You may recall the schools had a proposed health insurance increase as well, and our percentage is in line with theirs, which is about 10%. We've been extremely fortunate and have not had a health insurance increase in many, many years, but this year we are facing challenges as the trends continue to increase. Hopefully this funding would allow the county to continue to fund health insurance and not pass any of that increase on to our employees. As county services have expanded, we've made do with the positions we had and distributed new tasks to existing employees, but we can no longer sustain that approach. So as a result of that, I've included funds for six out of the 12 positions requested through this process. All 12 of the positions are warranted, and it was really hard to determine which ones to fund in this process. We do plan to continue to address the positions that are not recommended, and we'll address those in future years. The positions that we've included are a multimedia specialist for public information. That person could help us with making sure that the website is updated, social media posts, recording and streaming our meetings, and that kind of thing. An administrative assistant in the building inspections department. We currently have a permit technician and a permit coordinator in that office. We don't have someone that's dedicated to being an administrative assistant, and that's a real challenge. Sometimes we aren't able to provide the very best customer service for our citizens because they have to wait, or the technician or permit coordinator cannot get to the phone quickly, so that would help alleviate that problem. We've added a buildings and grounds maintenance worker. We haven't added a maintenance worker in about 20 years, and we've expanded our facilities a great deal, so that's definitely a need. Last week Alex came forward and spoke with you about volunteer Montgomery. We have made great strides with that program, and we really need a volunteer coordinator to continue to take that to the next level. Two positions are recommended for planning, one is a transportation planner that would allow us to go seek funding opportunities and evaluate transportation needs throughout the county, which we can't really focus on at this time, and a zoning compliance officer. Again, we're able to address new applicants and that kind of thing, but it's very difficult to do the ongoing compliance, so that's a crucial need. The budget reclassifies 11 positions in the compensation and classification plan, and it makes a few other adjustments to the plan. It's important that we revisit the plan every year. We don't, sometimes places don't do that, they wait a few years, three to five years, and then they have to address the whole plan, and it costs a lot of money, and people get behind with their pay. So we're really making an effort to keep that up to date every single year. We've talked before recently about enhancing recruitment, retention, succession planning, and career development by providing funding for things like enhancing the service awards program, expanding the tuition reimbursement program for employees, and other career development and opportunities and employee events. The budget includes $3.2 million in funding for the 47 outside agencies, which is an increase of just over $100,000. So as we move forward over the next few weeks, and hopefully the state moves forward with their budget as well, please keep in mind what you already know. The board may choose to approve a rate that is lower than the advertised rate. The approved rate cannot be higher than that rate, but it can be lower, and I'm hopeful that the proposed budget provides you with some flexibility to adjust the budget and tax rate prior to the adoption of those items. We are extremely fortunate to have a highly skilled and dedicated group of financial experts in our Office of Management and Budget. Mark McGruder, who you know very well, is here this evening, and he has worked tirelessly on this process. Also with him is Kiri Faro, she's pretty new to our team, but she's a great addition as well. They, along with Paul Kaiser, have spent so many hours analyzing trends, projections, evaluating expenditures, and many, many hours making sure that the information you have tonight is the best we can provide. Our finance folks provide a critical piece to this equation, and Jen Harris and Duri Aguliar, they're always awesome and help us get the information presented to you in a meaningful and understandable way. I appreciate everyone's assistance so much, also Chris and Brad are always very helpful through the process, and I couldn't do it without these people. So in closing, while it's challenging to fund every needed budget request, those outlined for funding in the proposed budget are a significant step in a positive direction for both MCPS and Montgomery County. Again, as we move forward, if you have any questions, you can please let me know, and I'm going to turn it over to Mark now and let him give you a presentation about more of the nuts and bolts.
Good evening. So I wanted to start off with a little background on the county's budget process, and Angie talked a little bit about this, but in November of each year, county divisions are provided with base budget targets. And when you look at the budget document, you'll see that it's separated into two distinct components. We have the base budget component, and then we have an addenda or addendum that is added to that base budget component. So I want to kind of highlight those two pieces for you. So the base budget is the estimated minimum cost for continued operations, and then addenda are things that are added over and above that basic operating cost for the upcoming year for new or expanded initiatives. So what we try to show a separation between what the base of operations is and what new stuff is being added to the budget each year. So base budget targets are the base of personnel and operating costs for the upcoming fiscal year, and we take personnel and we update those costs based on current positions and benefits. We take the operation and maintenance amount, and we cap that at the current level, and then for the most part, capital outlay is removed from the base budget. Now there are some divisions that have a permanent capital outlay component for equipment that is replaced every year. An example would be vehicles in the sheriff's office and at the county, and then computer replacements that are replaced every year. And then addenda, again, that's for new and expanded initiatives, and those are requests over and above the base budget target that are shown as an addenda. And before we recommend any funding as an addenda request, the base budget is challenged to determine whether or not we can absorb those costs in the base budget before we make the recommendation. So in January, I provided preliminary revenue estimates to the board. Since that time, the revenue adjustment, the revenue has been revised a little bit based on new information. So in January, we estimated 4.4 million. We've made about 1.5 million in revisions to that, so the new total undesignated revenue going into next year is estimated at 5.9 million. And that's primarily due to changes in the interest rate. The preliminary revenue estimates were based on 3.5%, based on what's happening with the Federal Reserve. We don't feel that they're going to be as aggressive in rate reductions, so we've moved that to 4%. We also had additional supplementals that were added to the personal property book since December 31st. We tried to adjust the motor vehicle valuation to kind of match what's going on with current trends. There was additional sales tax growth as well. This number does not include the tax rate increase. Talk a little bit about total requested funds for fiscal year '25. In total, the county's request, including requests from departments and for compensation, was right at $7 million. The school operating request was at $6.8 million. We restored the penny value to county and school capital needs that was removed in fiscal year '24. That was right at $1.2 million. So grand total of new requested dollars was right at $14.8, almost $15 million. Total new undesignated revenue is $5.9 million, that left a shortfall of around $9 million. In order to fully fund those requests, a real estate tax rate of seven and a half cents would have been required. The '25 proposed budget, as Angie indicated, includes a five cent tax rate increase over the current real estate rate. This increase provides $6 million in additional revenue. So we take our new undesignated revenue at 5.9 million, add the proposed five cent real estate tax rate increase at $6 million, and we have $11.9 million in new undesignated revenue for fiscal year '25. This next slide shows the distribution of new undesignated funds for the fiscal year '25 proposed budget. As you can see, as Angie indicated earlier, for school operations, $5.9 million has been added. For school capital, which restores the half a cent that was removed in the fiscal year '25 budget adds an additional $600,000, for a total of $6.5 million in new funds for Montgomery County Public Schools. On the county side, for county operations, $4.8 million in undesignated revenue is earmarked for county operations, and then again restoring the half a cent that was removed in the fiscal year '24 budget for county capital adds an additional $600,000, for a total of $5.4 million in county funds. Again, the total was $11.9 million in total new undesignated revenue. 55% is going to the schools, 45% is going to the county. This next chart shows the revenue sources that make up the proposed budget. Again, it's 254.6 million. The largest category is designated funds, those are earmarked for specific purposes. That makes up 42.6%. The second largest category is real estate at 35.2%, and then the other categories make up the balance of the total budget. Next slide shows where the funds go, again, 254.6 million. Approximately 61% of the money goes to the Montgomery County Public Schools. About 27% goes to the county general fund, 10% that goes to debt service, and around 2% to cover county capital and the transfer to the Economic Development Authority. The next slide shows county funding for schools since 2014. Again, for 2025, the transfer is 64.3 million. Talk about some major highlights for the budget. Again, transfer to the school operating fund that will cover general school operating needs is 5.9 million. A 5% compensation increase for all county employees, it's roughly 1.9 million. Restoring the half a cent penny value for both the county and the school capital fund is right at 1.3 million. Additional positions, reclassifications, and compensation plan adjustments is right at 800,000. The sheriff's office regional jail increase, that's based on increased number of inmates in the jail, is at 665,000, almost 666,000. Increased ongoing operations that would include utilities, contracts, basic increases throughout the county right at 600,000. A 10% health insurance increase that is held in special contingencies is right at half a million dollars.
Can I add something real quick right there while you're on this slide? The increase in ongoing operating cost, it's not an inflationary amount. We didn't just increase those items across the board. They were analyzed individually, and it's for service contracts, maintenance agreements, utility costs that we know have increased and that kind of thing, just to clarify.
Some more additional highlights. Employee events, service awards and tuition reimbursement at $205,000. Information technology increases for software licenses, hardware, telecommunications increases, $131,000. Fire and EMS increases for equipment replacement, software and training, 124, almost 125,000. Outside agency increases, again, the county has 47 outside agencies, and we added roughly $121,000 to those agencies. Fire and rescue agency increases for volunteer fire and rescue agencies, $94,000. That was based on a recommendation from the Fire and Rescue Commission. And then the sheriff's office, we added professional services training and vehicle maintenance at 65,000. As Angie had indicated when she did her part of the presentation, there were six FTEs added: multimedia specialist, administrative assistant, a maintenance worker, a volunteer coordinator, a planner to and for transportation, and a zoning compliance officer. The next chart shows the county's proposed budget net of transfers to other funds. For the general government portion of the general fund, right at 70 million. School operating fund at 146.2. School nutrition fund at 5.7 million. School capital at 3 million. County capital at 4.4 million. Debt service fund at 25.2 million. The Economic Development Authority transfer at 380,000, and the law library at 17,600. Total budget, net of transfers to other funds, 254.6 million. It's $18.2 million above last year's budget, or a 7.7% increase. Talk a little bit about the next steps. On March 18th, we're scheduled to have the board establish and advertise tax rate and budget so we can make the deadlines for the newspaper. On April 4th, we plan to hold a public hearing on the budget and tax rate, and hopefully we can adopt the budget on April 15th and the tax rate. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mark. As we've talked about, these dates can be changed a little bit. We have to be careful that we are respectful of the commissioner and treasurer's offices. They do their work to make sure that the tax tickets go out in time for citizens to pay those for their June 5th payment. And we plan to have a budget work session as part of the meeting a week from tonight. So if you have any questions between now and then, we'll be sure to address them on Monday.
Okay. So first of all, on behalf of the board, thank staff for getting all this together. I know it's a long process. And then, as Angie said, we'll have a work session scheduled for next Monday on the budget. In the meantime, as you go through the budget, and especially for like our new folks, I know this is like a big document, but as you go through, if you have questions, just send them to Angie, and then she'll make like a total of the questions and the answers and send out to everyone. And then we'll also have a time for questions on Monday night, too. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that being said, we're adjourned.